Because he was taking his head and just mashing into the, uh, he was, what was I trying to break?
Commercial.
And then expired driver's license. Please report comes out and then expire.
Unfortunately, we have to start the meeting. The Bernards Township Planning Board Regular Meeting of June 8, 2021 is now called to order. Please stand for the flag.
Let's begin. United States of America and the Republic which sustains. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings law of 1975, notice of this meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Berners was posted on the bulletin board in Reception Hall, the Municipal Building, Collier Lane, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, was sent to the Bernersville News, Whippany, New Jersey, to the Courier News, Bridgewater, New Jersey, on January 20th, 2021, and was electronically mailed to all those people who have requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Berners Township Planning Board. There will be no new cases heard after 10:00 PM, and no new witnesses or testimony will be heard after 10:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Chairwoman Pejic.
Here.
Ms. A.C. is invited because she is unable to attend. Mayor Fields.
Here.
Mr. Crane.
Here.
Mr. Demergian.
Here.
Mr. McNally is invited because he is unable to attend this evening. Ms. Manduk.
Here.
Ms. Mr. Angelo.
Here.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Aorio has a flooding issue at his house, and since he's not here, I guess he wasn't able to resolve it. Uh, Mr. Vanish.
Here.
Mr. Drill.
Here.
Mr. Flavir.
Here.
Mr. Schla.
Here.
And for the record, Ms. Keefer is present. Chairwoman, you have a quorum to be pursued.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to excuse Ms. A.C., Committee Member McNally, and Mr. Aorio.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mayor Fields. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to open the floor now for nominations because Committee Member McNally is now a Class III member. He is not eligible to be an officer of the Board for the MLUL. So I'd like to take nominations, take nominations for the position of Vice Chair pro town.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Ms. Mr. Strangelo for the position.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Manduk. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Best Strangel.
Thank you.
Next item is approval in the minutes of the May 4th, 2021 regular meeting. Mr. Demergian and Ms. Manduk are not eligible, so say we're not here. May I take a motion from the remaining members, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second, John Crane.
Second by Mr. Crane. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the resolution for Fellowship Village, Inc., Block 9301, Lot 33, 8,000 Fellowship Road, Preliminary and Final Site Plan, PB 20-005. That was an approval. And we are looking at the version noted as 2021-06-06-V4. And on this motion, everybody here is eligible to vote. So may I have a motion to approve the resolution as noted?
Madam Chair, I noted that Mr. Bowman did not vote on that application.
He did not? You are correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Fields.
Yes.
Mr. Crane.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Demergian.
Yes.
Ms. Manduk.
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Pejic.
Yes. Next item is appointment of a landscape committee, Malucci, Vincent J. Malucci, Block 11, 501, Lot 3.03, 48, Kingsbridge Road, Preliminary and Final Subdivision, PB 12-009. Mr. Schla, can you please give an overview of what's needed by the Board?
Yeah, this is a subdivision approved in 2014. They finally finished building two houses. And this is a relatively small, simple one. It's just looking at the landscaping that was required to screen one of the new homes and a rain garden on that property from adjoining residents.
Okay, how many people would you like on the committee?
Three is usually a good number.
Okay, would anybody like to be on the committee? Once Mr. Schla has the names, he will meet with the applicant and schedule a time that's convenient for everybody. Would anybody, can I have some volunteers?
I'll mark you.
Fine.
I'll mark you.
Okay, so we've got Mr. Bowman, Ms. Manduk, and Ms. Mr. Strangelo.
Would you rather do it, Mr.?
If you would like to do it.
Go ahead.
All right, then it's Mr. Demergian.
I did one recently.
Okay, it's going to be Mr. Demergian.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, now is, is, I've got Ms. Manduk, Ms. Mr. Angelo, and?
No, no, no.
No. Ms. Manduk, Mr. Bowman, and Mr. Demergian.
Thank you.
Thank you. And what normally happens is that someone gives a short written, a short email to Mr. Schla saying what is done, and then someone will give a very brief summary to the Board at the appropriate time of what, you know, what they saw. Next, hearing, modification of condition of approval, U.S. Golf Association, Block 9601, Lot 5.01, 77 Liberty Corner Road, extension of time to either commence construction and improve parking lot, parking layout, or apply to the Board for modified parking lot layout, PB 17-003B. Good evening, Mr. Melman, how are you?
Ma'am Chair, I'll be recusing myself and asking to leave probably tonight.
Okay, and you are also recusing yourself from Fairmount?
Yes.
So I think you can, you can actually leave the meeting.
You don't even have to be excused.
You have to be excused and?
Recused, not excused.
Yes, that's right. You were recused.
Chair, we still have the minutes to approve. Would you like Mr. Crane here to approve the minutes?
Which minute?
Which minute?
We did, May 4th.
We did those already.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did, I have to wait down.
It's the shock of being back in person.
Do you know what it is? It's too much.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Crane.
Thanks, John. Hi, John.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Melman. Good evening, good to see you all. Tom Melman, Dave Pitney, on behalf of USGA. I was just saying to Mr. Drill, this is my first in public, in-person public hearing in about a year. Got to put the tie on. Nice night. Well, we're here tonight to talk about the USGA and a plan that this Board approved a few years ago. You may recall the USGA came in to expand the administration building, add some parking, landscaping, et cetera. That plan basically was approved, it's been perfected in the sense that all the improvements have been installed except for the parking. And when we were here last time with the original application, we talked about the fact that the parking may change over time, because when we were here originally, the USGA was seeking to acquire the neighboring Pine Property, which in fact, they have since done. However, and the reason why we talked about it when the site plan application was going forward is if, with the Pine Property acquisition, it may alter the need to modify the parking lot, to modify the access. These are things the USGA has been kind of mulling over in terms of what they would do with the site when they acquired the Pine Property. So the Board actually imposed a condition, and Mr. Drill can certainly relate to you, that basically gave the USGA additional time to ponder what to do with the parking, and imposed a condition that either we commence construction or come back to the Board with a modified plan by a certain date. That date has come and gone. We actually came back to the Board for an extension, I guess, two years ago, and they gave us an extension through June of this year. So we're here tonight, and obviously the reason is COVID-related, that during the past year, the USGA is really not focused on this parking issue. They've been focusing on many other things that they're at the deal with. The USGA site has largely been vacant for the past year. It's been open technically, but it's just been a skeleton crew there. And so the ask tonight really is because of COVID and the fact that this past year kind of just, you know, flew by without focusing on these issues, that we're given one more year with the same condition to effectively give us time to mull over the parking situation, decide how we're going to address the parking, perhaps modify the access, and come back a year, within a year from now, to talk about how we might change the approved plan or bill what was approved. That still may, may happen. It's the function of what the USGA will decide over time.
So you're asking for a one-year extension to June 30th, 2022?
It's actually June 6th, I believe.
Six, yeah. So just, the last resolution that the Board adopted on this matter is, did you get the date? It was adopted on August 20th, 2019, and that resolution did three things. It granted a two-year extension of the final site plan protection period through June 6, 2021, because it was a two-year extension.
Correct.
The MLUL allows up to three one-year extensions, and they applied for the first two-year extensions at that time. They also, that resolution also granted a modification of condition number nine. That's the one Mr. Melman was talking about. To extend the time that they could commence construction of the permanent parking spaces, consistent with the initial 2016 approval, or to submit an application, like he said, for a modified parking layout, again, to June 6, 2021. It also granted two one-year extensions of the expiration. They had one C variance, they had some C variances. And under your ordinance and under the Board's resolution, they also have time limits. That also extended that till June 6, 2021. So what they're seeking is to have all the time limits extended by one year to June 6, 2022.
But this is the final time they would come in, they could come in.
For a site plan, we couldn't, we can't extend it further.
This is the final for the site plan protection period.
Right.
They could still seek the other approvals, but they wouldn't be protected if the ordinance changed.
Correct.
And the variance would expire, so they wouldn't be protected at all.
Oh, that's a good point, because the ordinance limits how many times you can get the variance.
Okay.
Understood.
Yeah, good point, Mr. Schla.
But that's the ask.
Right.
Mr. Drill said it very succinctly and to the point.
Okay, does Board members have any questions of Mr. Melman?
I do.
Yes.
Do you plan on still being there any year? There's a lot of scuttlebutt that you won't be occupying that facility any longer.
I've heard nothing to that effect. In fact, they just spent an incredible amount of money fixing up that building, if you've been there recently, but they basically almost gutted the entire building to repurpose it to a more open floor plan. They did announce that the Test Center, which is a smaller building in the back, is moving to North Carolina. That was announced some number of months ago. But the administration building, the headquarters building, the museum, I'm not aware of any plans to relocate that at all.
Yeah, the community's been concerned that you're going to be leaving, so it's been a lot of talk.
The Test Center is going to Pinehurst, that was announced.
I'm just curious, how many people are getting relocated? How many people were in the building that?
In the Test Center?
Yeah.
I heard it said maybe 20 people, give or take. These are the folks that they're like, they're more like the scientific types. They evaluate golf balls and golf clubs. All the golf equipment goes through the USGA for approval, and it can't be sold and marketed until the USGA approves it.
So that's?
That's what happens to the Test Center.
Okay, because even I read the paper, and you read the paper, and I thought, okay, that's it, they're closing, they're moving the whole operation.
They are setting up a small museum in Pinehurst. If you've been to Pinehurst, they call it the mecca of U.S. golf. It's a big golf facility. They're putting in a small museum there, the Test Center will be there, and of course, they're going to have the U.S. Open there, I think, three times over the next 15 or so years. So they've made a big commitment to Pinehurst, but there's still a huge commitment to Berners Township.
Nice to hear.
Okay, because it's important, you know, if you were going to leave, you're kicking the can down the road. So then it's, would be an open case, and the next person who comes in and occupies the building, then it's an issue for them. So I just want to feel secure that you're coming back in a year.
Hopefully sooner, but.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Board members?
What's the scope of the changes proposed to the parking that this extension would, would cover, would grant?
There's, there's no change proposed. The site plan that was approved showed a defined parking lot that hasn't yet been built. And hasn't been built because with the acquisition of the Pine Property and possibly relocating the access drive, the approved parking lot may have to be reconfigured, relocated, you know, moved around. And so the thought was, why build that parking lot with the original approval when the, when the building work was done, if it's going to be torn up and remodeled at some point in the future? So the Board gave us the flexibility to work on that and think about how we might redesign it pending use of the Pine Property, which at that time had not been acquired, it has since been now. And there's been talk about rezoning the Pine Property, which is zoned for residential use, to the use compatible with the USGA. That hasn't yet been accomplished either, but that's part of the mix, if you will, to incorporate the Pine Property into the USGA property and eventually, eventually effectuate how they're going to work the parking, the access, et cetera.
If you had to put odds on it, what do you think the likelihood is of effectuating the plan that was approved versus sort of coming, you know, coming back for, for an amendment or modification?
It's hard to say. I mean, I've seen sketches where they, in terms of how they want to modify it, but what they will do indirectionally, I couldn't comment on that, I don't know. But they'll have, they have a good team, Mr. Michelle is here from Gladstone Design. They have a good team that will look at this and advise them of how they're going to use that property.
Okay.
Any other questions? Well, I guess at this point, I'll take a motion on this issue.
So they're seeking a one-year extension of all the applicable dates. So if someone is in favor of that, you'd make a motion to grant the one-year extension of all the applicable dates, and then I would do the resolution accordingly.
Madam Chairwoman, I'll make a motion to extend the applicable date by one year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowman, second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Demergian. Roll call, please.
Mayor Fields.
Yes.
Mr. Crane, oh, Mr. Crane, I'm sorry, it's recused. Mr. Demergian.
Yes.
Ms. Manduk.
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Mr. Bowman.
Yes.
Chairwoman Pejic.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item is the Fairmount Cemetery of Newark and Somerset Hills, Block 2301, Lot 12.01, 95 Mount Airy Road, Preliminary and Final Site Plan, PB 21-003. Good evening, Mr. Osterman.
Good evening. So is this the first meeting with no mask?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's wonderful, isn't it?
Funny, I was commenting to Board members, I recognized Tom Melman when he came in. The last time I saw him was a year ago without a mask. When you came in, I didn't recognize you. Because the only times I've seen you, you've been wearing a mask.
Right, right. Oh, it's wonderful not to wear one. All right. For the record, Michael Osterman, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Fairmount Cemetery Association of Newark and Somerset Hills. Fairmount is the owner of certain property located at 95 Mount Airy Road, and identified as Block 2301, Lot 12.01 in Berners Township, and Block 101, Lot 6.01 in Bernersville Borough. The property comprises over 70 acres, about 68 acres being located in Berners Township. So the majority of the property is obviously in Berners Township. The applicant operates a cemetery on the property, which is known as Somerset Hills Memorial Park. Somerset Hills Memorial Park includes a cemetery, a mausoleum, and a crematory. The main building on the property, which is located entirely in Berners Township, contains the mausoleum and the crematory. For reasons that will be discussed this evening, the applicant is proposing to expand the crematory, which will require a small addition to the main building on the property. In order to proceed with that project, the applicant has applied to this Board for preliminary and final site plan approval for that building addition. No variances are required for this project. The way we'd like to proceed this evening is to call two witnesses. First, Mr. Rich Gilman, the Superintendent of Somerset Hills Memorial Park, and secondly, Mr. Jim Mattson, the project engineer.
Okay, and just procedurally for the Board's edification, so the land development ordinance, and I'm actually reading out of Mr. Schla's memo, which is phenomenal, concise, right to the point. On the second page, the ordinance does not identify cemeteries and mausoleums as permitted uses in the R4 zone or in any zone in the township for that matter. However, cemeteries are regulated on a statewide basis under the New Jersey Cemetery Act. So what the municipality has here, this is a statutorily permitted use, because once a cemetery follows the procedure in the New Jersey Cemetery Act, which is to get the consent of the governing body, and this Board found in a prior application by the, by the cemetery that the township consented in the 1930, in 1930, to establishment of the cemetery. Once they do that, that's it. It's permitted. So that's why the Board has jurisdiction. Also, I was asked a question, if they don't need any variances and they don't need any exceptions, what are they doing here? Well, they're commercial. The only type of development which is exempt from getting site plan approval is one or two-family residential development. If you have multifamily, if you have a three-family home, if you have a one-family or a two-family, you don't need site plan approval. Everyone else needs site plan approval. They are here for site plan approval, but this is one of the few times that you're going to see, this is an as-of-right application. Okay? You have the Board professionals in their memos, they don't need any variances or exceptions. So I haven't seen one of these in quite a few years.
Okay.
This is kind of a neat thing. Statutory permitted use, no variances, no exceptions. You ask a bunch of questions. Not much discretion.
Why? Does it come before?
Well, what the point is, the, the point is just to make sure that they dot the i's and cross the t's, that they really don't need any variances or exceptions.
Okay.
And by the way, the Board, the New Jersey Supreme Court says the Board can always ask the applicant to change something. Now, on an as-of-right application, they don't have to say yes, but you can ask. Maybe they'll say yes.
For the goodwill.
Before we start, I'd like to know if any Board members went to the property and looked over the, the site for the proposed addition?
Well, I had seen it before from the prior application that they had before us.
Okay.
Yeah.
And anybody else go?
We were taking down the yurt or whatever it was.
It was for a new maintenance building, yes.
Yeah.
And I did a drive-through this past weekend just to look to see where the small addition was going to be in the main, you know, area with the office and the crematory. So why don't we swear in your witnesses, Mr. Osterman, and we'll swear in the Board professionals at the same time?
So I'm going to start over here and go this way. So first, can you identify yourself?
Rich Gilman.
And spell your last name?
G.I.L.M.A.N.
Okay, so one L.
James Mattson, M.A.D.S.E.N.
And you are the Board's, you are the applicant's?
Professional engineer.
Okay.
Vanish, V.A.N.I.S.H., Board Engineer.
Thank you.
Larry Flavir, Board Engineer, P.L.E.V.I.R.
Thank you. I don't have trouble with the spelling, I have trouble with the pronunciation. Thank you, I don't have trouble with the spelling, I have trouble with the pronunciation.
Jay Schla, that's my...
Okay, everyone raise your right hand. Does everyone swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, boom.
Okay, please go ahead, Mr. Osterman.
Okay, I'd like to start with my first witness, Mr. Rich.
Can you speak a little louder?
Rich Gilman, I'm sorry, I wasn't speaking into the mic.
There's also a handheld mic there, if you'd like to use that.
Thank you. Mr. Gilman, by whom are you employed?
Fairmount Cemetery Association of Somerset Hills and Newark.
And what is your position there?
Superintendent.
And how long have you held that position?
I've been superintendent for 10 years.
And what are your responsibilities as superintendent at Somerset Hills Memorial Park?
My responsibilities, I oversee the daily operations of the mausoleum, crematory, grounds, and help with planning capital improvements.
And Somerset Hills, Somerset Hills Memorial Park's existing operations include a crematory, is that correct?
Yes.
And where is that currently located on the property?
Just a quickie, he's a fact witness, that's why you don't have to qualify him, I assume?
Right, that's correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that's correct, no, he's not an expert. And where is the crematory currently located on the property?
The crematory is centrally located in an existing mausoleum complex. I guess on the north side of the property.
All right, is that also referred to in some of the reports as the main building?
Yes.
Okay. And for how long has Somerset Hills Memorial Park operated that crematory?
The crematory opened in 1974 and added, started off with two unit cremation units, and then in 1984...
Can you, can we hold up for one second? The electricity just went back on for the library, the mayor wants to make the call, and I don't want...
Sure.
If she leaves and you keep on going, she can't participate, so can we take a break?
Happy to take a break. That's okay. So I take it that they lost power at the library?
I guess you can go over there and adjust it.
Yeah, there's been some fairly spread power.
This is a man who...
Heck of a storm.
With the AC.
Normally, a more...
I get home tonight, right, it is straight with the AC. My mind's like, you gotta make it warm, but I'm still sweating.
I'm good.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
I'll go up there too.
That's why I wear six layers here, it's always so cold.
Are you guys comfortable?
They had a problem with the AC, as in it was like 90 degrees in here earlier today. So this is new kicks.
You guys called?
Well, this is better than 90 degrees.
I've got a jacket on.
Yeah, they got jackets and ties.
I have a jacket, and I jack it too often.
You were saying...
Sorry.
1974.
Yeah, so the crematory was added to the cemetery in 1976 with two units. And then in 1984, 83 actually, they added two more units, totaling four. So the crematory's been there for 45 years.
And how many crematories exist in the state of New Jersey?
Currently, 25 crematories.
And how many exist in Somerset County?
We are the only crematory in Somerset County.
And how many exist in some of the surrounding counties, in northern counties in the state of New Jersey, such as Hunterdon, Morris, Warren, Sussex, for example?
Hunterdon, Warren, and Sussex do not have any crematories, and Morris County has one.
And where is that one located?
Locust Hill in Dover.
Let's see, so you indicated that currently Somerset Hills Memorial Park has four cremators or cremation machines, if you will?
Correct.
Okay. And as part of this application, Somerset Hills Memorial Park is proposing to expand the existing crematory and replace two of the existing cremators with new ones and add a fifth cremator, is that correct?
Yes, so we'll be eliminating two existing units and adding three new units in the expansion area.
Okay. And are you sizing the addition to the, to the main building, the cremation area, to allow for further expansion as well?
We did design it with the intention of being able to add another unit.
All right, let's talk about why the applicant is proposing these changes. Is the demand for cremations increasing?
Yes, it is.
And do you have any statistics that might demonstrate why that is the case?
Yes, so there has been, the Cremation Association of North America has been collecting statistics and data of all cremations in North America. And since, let's see here, so I'll just say, in New Jersey, the cremation rate for 2015 was 42.6 percent. And then proceeded to climb to 46.9 percent in 2018. And 2019 was 48.5. And they're projecting, for the first time in New Jersey in 2020, the preliminary number is going to be 51.5 percent. So that'll be the first time that cremation was the choice over burial in two years.
Just a quick question, do you have David Banish's memo?
Yes.
Can you show him paragraph seven? Because David's memo, the percentages are a little different than what he just testified to. I just want to make sure that I get the correct percentages into the resolution.
Sure, this is Mr. Banish's...
Take a look at paragraph seven. Can you tell me if Mr. Banish's figures have to be corrected or if the figures you just read have to be corrected? Mr. Banish says that...
So he was using 2014, which I did not use that date.
Which date, what was the first date you used?
The first date I used was 2015.
Okay.
And then I used 2018.
So put it this way, is his...
So they're different years.
Right, is his 2014 correct?
I could check that right now. Actually, I don't have that number in front of me.
Okay, so give me your 2015 percentage?
2015 percentage was 42.6 percent.
Okay, and Mr. Ban, and you went to 2018, correct?
I did, yes.
And what did you say 2018 was?
46.9 percent.
Okay, so let me ask you something. Do you mind if we use Mr. Banish's figures? Since he starts in 2014 at 41.2, which is less than your 42.6, and he goes to 2019, which is 48.6, which is greater than your 2018 46.9. Can we use Mr. Banish's figures?
Sure, I have, yes, that's fine.
And then you projected for 2020, what?
The preliminary projection is 51.5.
And Mr. Banish says that the projected cremation rate in 2024 is 54.4 percent. Do you have that in your figures there?
They project for 2025, 56.8. So I don't have the same years, I'm using the Cremation Association of North America numbers.
Right, that's what he said he used also.
So you went to a different...
They included a narrative in their application that I summarized.
Right.
Yep, and so I suspect that their application referenced that report. I did not try to find the source document itself.
Okay.
In fact, I think I read it.
Who put the...
I may be able to explain what happened. I think there was a reference in the writer of the application that I drafted with information that I got from my client, indicating that there were new figures that were going to be due out in May. And I think we filed this application before May, obviously. But I think the numbers that Mr. Gilman may be referring to may be the latest numbers.
All right, so we're going to, just for purpose of the resolution and no insult intended to Mr. Banish, we're not going to use his figures in paragraph seven, we're going to use the figures that we just testified to, okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
And some other, so also the trend favoring cremation over interment.
Before you get into that, just to clarify, the figures that you gave us are for just New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, those were in New Jersey.
Right, and do we also have figures for the United States? Are they, how are they different?
They're very, actually very similar. The United States numbers for, let's say, we'll start again, in 2015 was 48.6 percent. And 2018 was 53.1. And 2019 was 54.6. And then, let's see, I don't know if I have the preliminaries for 2020, I don't. But they are projecting the United States cremation rate in 2025 to reach 65.2 percent. And then projected 2030 rate is 72 percent in the United States. I could add to the New Jersey rates if you'd like for projections as well.
I think we've got what we need.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But we've done a deep dive.
And just some of the trend, of course, for cremation over interment and two men. Also, the first of the baby boomers are now 75 years old and comprise the largest demographic in the United States. And the combination of the aging of the baby boom population and the trend favoring cremation over interment and two men will result in increased demand of cremations.
Mr. Gilman, do you have any statistics pertaining to the number of cremations that have been performed or projected to be performed at Somerset Hills Memorial Park?
So the numbers I brought, in 2015, Somerset Hills performed 1,300 cremations. And then I'll jump to 2020, we performed 1,520 cremations. And this year, with, we're on pace to do close to 2,000.
And how is that number projected to grow in the future?
So we're kind of projecting a number of around 2,300 for 2025.
How will the expanded crematory compare to the existing crematory? And how will this project help Somerset Hills Memorial Park meet the increasing demand for cremation?
So the biggest advantage will be the units will be upgraded, so the three new units we'll be purchasing are much more efficient, fuel-efficient. They take less time to do the cremation, so they have a smaller environmental impact. And they surpass, these units surpass all environmental requirements in every state. And the layout of the crematory, so the footprint of the crematory currently, although when they designed it in '76 and '84 to have four cremation units was thinking ahead, the actual available floor space to perform operations was limited. So this expansion will allow us to have more operating room and also some floor space for storage of materials. And so we're going to take advantage of having more space to run more efficiently.
If this project is approved, what's the expected timeline for construction of the building addition and the new cremators?
So we would like to start immediately upon approval, and we hope to complete the project by November, December of this year.
And when do you expect that you might install the sixth cremation machine in the future?
We're guessing six to eight years if needed. We're designing it to have that ability.
All right, next I'd like to have you address some of the comments set forth in the reports that we've received from Mr. Schley, from Mr. Banish, and from the fire official. Let's start with the June 2nd report from the Burness Township Fire Official. He recommends the installation of the appropriate truss roof sign on the main entrance to the building and a second one on the exterior of the crematory expansion. Would you please explain the requirement that he's referring to and whether the applicant will comply with that requirement?
I will certainly comply, and I'll have to get further details as to the exact location.
Can I suggest, if they're going to comply, I don't know if the board really wants to hear an explanation for what it means?
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is it was going to be a very quick answer, but in any event, I was curious, I didn't know what that truss requirement was, I was just curious myself.
I can tell you after the meeting.
No, no, I now know, honestly. But I thought something else might...
Okay, so you agree to that as a condition?
Okay. Next, I'd like to call your attention to Mr. Schley's report dated May 25th. Comment number three on page three of that report asks the applicant to show where the existing air conditioning units will be relocated to.
Put it this way, so Mr. Schley, right, has his comments starting on page two.
Right.
That go, if there's, if you don't agree with something, say something.
Well, it's not a question of agreeing, he's asking for more information, and we have an exhibit that's going to show that information.
Correct, but can you first go over the plan changes he wants and just say which ones of these do you, in other words, what the board has done in the past to save time? If you see, let's say...
You have objections?
Right. Six, the first six comments look like they're plan revision comments. There might be one in there for more information. So if you agree with the first six, you say we agree. If you have an objection to one and want to discuss one, just the plan revisions, then go and address anything he wants information on.
Okay, so comment three is the first one that he wants information on, and if you could address that one, please. Yes, comment three.
Could you please see if you're going to comply, do the one...
Right, do the compliance ones first.
Do the compliance ones first.
In other words, look, sheet one, he wants the, amend the index of drawings, do you agree?
Yes.
Comment two.
Are you going to comply with all the plan revisions that were identified in all of the reports?
Yes.
They settled some.
So now you go to the comments that are not plan revisions, right.
So he was asking if we could create some additional landscaping in that comment, and Mr. Gilman was going to address that.
Okay, that's comment three.
Okay, so I have provided a layout of possible landscape areas, should we...
Put it this way, have you shown that to these guys yet?
Just...
Is this going to be the first time they're seeing it?
I've seen it, staff has seen it.
Staff's seen it.
Okay.
But it was intended to be presented as an exhibit tonight, it's not part of the case file yet.
Okay, got it.
It's basically a markup, and we were going to have it marked as an exhibit.
Exhibit A1. You have a paper copy?
I do, would you like the paper copy?
I'd like you to give the paper copy to Cindy, and then you can show, I think up there, Cindy will mark it as exhibit A1. To our board professional, I'm asking the board professionals, are you going to be liking what you see? Since you've already seen it?
I do not dislike anything that they've presented.
Okay.
Do not dislike, that's a double negative.
Double negative.
You like what you've seen.
It's fine, it's acceptable.
All right, let him show his thing. Okay.
So I'll just comment on the landscape area, we do have space available there for...
Mr. Gilman, if you could, hang on just one second. Ms. Kiefer had asked me to bring extra copies that you could pass out.
Oh, good, it's approved.
Quite frankly, if everyone, you can hand out a copy.
We've got enough, we could just share.
Do you have enough for everybody?
Yeah.
Oh, it's a beautiful thing. Exhibit A1.
A prepared attorney.
So I think everything on this exhibit...
What are we calling this exhibit? This is a color-rendered sheet A200, that's what we're going to call it?
Sure.
Okay. Cindy, color-rendered sheet A200 is exhibit A1.
Well, it says crematory expansion on it, too.
Down the bottom.
Okay, do you want me to just go through the, what's on there and explain some of the stuff?
Sure.
So, the, okay, the exterior brick, uh, on the expansion is planning to match the existing mausoleum and office exterior. The EFS, uh, wall that's included on the expansion, um, will be an earth tone color, probably close to the brick color. Um, we don't want it to stand out, we want it to blend in. Um, the, the crematory stacks are stainless steel. The, as far as exterior lighting, there is an existing light that is in the area about thirty feet. Uh, it's in the actual expansion area now, where it would be. So, we're gonna relocate that exact same light, um, north into the new location, which will benefit the, the parking area. And, let's see here, the AC units, I've, I've placed them, um, close to where they were. And the roof ladder, that'll be relocated, um, to the right there on, on, on the same wall, essentially. And then also, the downspouts have been, have been, uh, shown for the roof. And then there's gonna be a rooftop HVAC unit, it's a small unit, probably like a one point five ton unit, just to, uh, heat and cool the office area and bathroom. And, uh, it'll be centrally located over the office.
So, let me ask a question to the board professionals and the board. Does anyone have any issues with what they're showing on exhibit A one? Because if no one has any issues, and if you do, ask, but if no one has any issues, then we'll make comment three a condition also, because it says on sheet two, show the existing blah, 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 and we'll say, consistent with exhibit A one. Anyone have any issues?
I have a question, too. So, uh, is this a new generator?
Uh, yes.
Is that a, an, an emergency power?
It is, yes, over the, I'll say, past eight or so years, there's been many storms where, as a crematory, we were vulnerable to power outages. And if you can imagine all the complications of trying to run the crematory, when the power gets cut off during a cremation or something like that. Especially for even prolonged periods of time where you're closed for nine days. There's a need, a community need for the crematory to be open.
Is it diesel, is it gas?
It's natural gas, and it runs the entire crematory facility, the office area as well.
It's there, isn't it?
It is there, yeah.
You say new, it's, it's new, but it's not proposed, it's already there.
Yeah, it's, it's existing.
They need requires some site plan approval for that, it's a regular, like, basically a red.
Yeah, I think I was, I don't know if it was asked to show or the location.
Yeah, no, I asked to show it, because it exists.
Right.
But it, it wasn't something that rose to the level of requiring a site plan approval, it's not a huge.
In other words, when he asked if it's new, the answer should have been no, it's existing.
Okay.
Okay. But it's not old.
I probably.
So, because it says it's not part of this application, I guess our, our, um, noise concerns an issue, or is that not? Because it's not part of this application, I guess that's a question.
Well, I, I, I think the question could be, does this generator get exercised regularly? If so, when? Is that the only other time?
Well, here's, here's the question. So, you have new mechanical, uh, rooftop HVAC units, et cetera.
Yes.
Are there, and my question is really to the board professionals, have you considered, uh, remedied? Do you have any concerns with the noise, um, that might affect the neighbors? Have, have those questions been asked?
Not, I have not asked that, but, but the question I would ask him, or I am asking you, is, does this thing get exercised like once a week, or once a month? And if so, when and what time of day?
Uh, yes, it's once a week, Friday at, uh, nine AM, and it runs for approximately ten minutes.
See, I'm not particularly troubled by that, uh, because presumably, neighbors are up. You know, it, it's, it's a point in time, weekly, um, that probably shouldn't disturb the neighbors nearby. The noise is coming off site. And then, the, the flip side of that is, when it is running, because it's needed, it's need, it's a presumably an emergency situation. And so, you know, those noise impacts, I think, would be kind of part, part of that situation.
Right, but legally, right? The noise is governed by the New Jersey Noise Code, which is NJAC seven colon twenty-nine point one. What that regulation, the DEP regulation, what that regulation says is, when an emergency generator is used in an emergency.
All bets are off?
All bets are off, it can make as much noise as it wants. But when a generator is exercised, it's subject to, it can't be more than sixty-five decibels at the nearest property line during daytime hours, which is defined between seven AM and.
Eleven.
Eleven PM, and no more than fifty decibels at the property line between the hours of ten PM and seven AM. So, the question is, when it's exercised, and most boards impose a condition, and in my opinion, you could pose a condition on this, even though the generator went in without needing planning board approval, it's all part of this. And generally, boards impose conditions, if you're gonna exercise it, don't do it on the weekend, because that's when people are gonna be out and about. Do it during the week, pick a consistent time to do it. And nine AM, like Mr. Banish says, seems like a reasonable period. But the question is, do you know whether you meet the sixty-five decibel at the property line standard? Because if you don't, that's a state requirement that the board can't waive. And if a neighbor complained about it, you actually would complain to the County Board of Health. And either they or the DEP, depending on what arrangement the county has, actually supposed to go out there with a noise meter and see. And if it exceeds sixty-five, you can add mufflers and all sorts of things on these generators. Probably more information than you wanted, but.
But as part of this application, if you wanted to deal with that and remove any element of doubt.
Right, you put a condition.
Put a condition in that they produce a noise test that identifies what the noise level is.
Unless you do know.
At the property line, at the time of day, that it's, that the, that the, that the generator is exercised.
Do you know if you're gen, what the generator?
I do not.
So, now I have to, we, we'll have to do a straw poll of whether the board wishes to impose a condition.
I, I, I don't think, personally, I don't think it's necessary. He said they tested on Fridays at nine AM, I don't.
Well, let me go to the rest of the board.
And it's a state regulation, where they have to comply with no matter what, but you guys.
Okay, um, Merfield?
No.
Okay. Ms. Masstrantall?
No.
Ms. Mandu?
No.
Mr. Baumann?
No.
And I'm a no.
But I'll leave in, if they're gonna, if they're gonna, the, I, I would suggest a condition saying the generator, exercise of the generator shall take place Friday at nine AM. Or you could say, any weekday between the hours of blank and blank. I think you should give them something like that.
Well, what do we, let's go on.
It's, it's programmed, it's gonna be like that, unless it's reprogrammed, which we don't intend to do. We purposely did it at that hour, because we know we'll be in the office and we'll realize that it's running, so.
Let me ask, does anybody want to put a condition in? Uh, Mr. Baumann?
No, I, I don't think we need to.
Oh, Ms. Mandu?
Nope.
Ms. Masstrantall?
No.
Merfield?
No.
No.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, please proceed.
I think we were at the point where the board might have been asking questions about this exhibit.
Right, and do, do we have any questions on the exhibit A one?
Well, the only question I have is, it says landscaped area, but it doesn't define what landscaped means.
Yeah, so it'll, the minimum would be lawn or some shrubs in there, I can't really put any trees in there, I don't think. Um, so, um, just to create pervious area, uh, for the site.
So, you, you want, it's more of a collection area for rain and stuff, is that what you're saying, or?
Not necessarily a collection area, I think, uh, I was asked if we could provide a small, uh, landscaped area in between the building and the parking lot.
I made a comment in my memo that there seemed to be a little extra pavement in the vicinity.
I see.
Consider if you can turn some of that out and.
Okay, so, to, to count.
It's not a certain function other than pretty it up and get rid of some extra pavement that you don't really need.
Okay, I understand, then, the, the, the reasoning, not, not a buffering, but a repl.
No, you're not gonna see any of this from anywhere.
Right, that's why I didn't understand it. So, it's really just a return to nature.
Instead of saying, instead of saying landscaped area, you should have said.
Green space.
Green space.
That's fine, that, I'm, I'm.
Also, I think the Environmental Commission made a comment about, um, whether there's clean runoff versus dirty runoff. This sort, sort of addresses that, you're taking away, you have a service.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions on exhibit A one before Mr. Gilman goes forward? Okay, uh, Mr. Gilman, do you have anything else to, uh?
Yeah, I, I had, uh, an additional.
Do you have some more questions?
Just a few, just a few. We have submitted, along with A one, some, uh, photographs that were, were also intended to be exhibits tonight. And I just wanted to have Mr. Gilman refer to those, because they, those photographs address comments that were in some of the reports. So, uh, Mr. Gilman, uh, item five in Mr. Schley's report pertains to screening of proposed roof mounted utility equipment. Do you have any photographs that, uh, address that?
Uh, so the current photographs shows, um, an existing, uh, fence or screen.
Do you have copies of these, hard copies?
I do, I have some copies.
Do you have copies of the photographs, great.
Do you have one copy of each or multiple copies?
Multiple.
Okay, so let's make sure.
I've already given one copy.
Gets to Cindy.
Yes.
Okay, so, how many different photographs are you gonna be showing?
There's four.
So, it's gonna be A two, A three, A four, and A five photographs. And are all four of these photographs in response to item five in Mr. Schley's memo? Or also in response to any other comment?
No, actually, there's also, uh, photographs, I think, in response to item seven.
Okay, so you have item five and.
Item seven. Were these taken recently, Mr. Osterman? Or Mr. Gilman?
So, um, there's four photos, three of them were taken recently, and one was taking, taken in the, uh, past winter. I'd say probably around.
This is what we have to do, we're gonna mark these photos. So, I gotta know which photo is A two, which is A three, which is A four, and which is A five. So, you have a photo up on.
Consistent with four photos, can you do that?
Huh?
A two, consistent with four photos.
Yeah, I could, but I don't want to. Especially since one of them is taken in the winter and three of them are.
Is this one of those?
This is the one taken in the winter. Do you want this, is this A two, three, four, or five?
That should be A two, right there, the first one.
Okay, so let's get A two passed out. A little rusty. That's all, that's all this is. A two, coming down the bias. A two.
A two.
A two.
Bingo.
Which one is gonna be A three, so we have this A two, which is A three?
A three can be any of the ones, I think it was.
So, let's say this one here.
Okay, so the one of the.
That's A three?
That's A three.
Three trees in the fourth row.
There you go.
Wait a minute, ah, there you go.
A three.
A three. A three.
Coming on now.
Is this A four?
Um, let me just, I'm gonna go in order that they're, uh, presented here, uh, let's see here.
Ah, the snow one.
Snow one is A four?
Is A four?
The snow is A four.
Oh, that's A four.
And hence, Mr. Banish, that's why we couldn't mark them all A two.
Aren't we missing one?
One more coming on.
One more?
Is it A one?
No, 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 no.
I don't have any.
This is A one.
Oh, he's here waiting. He's here.
Picture in the snow is A four. Don't worry about A four, just pet that A four.
Yeah, so that one.
We have A four, sorry.
We only need A five.
We only need A five when we're done.
This is A five?
We got it, okay, here it comes.
Mr. Mers, is, is the charge of making sure we're all in sync?
A five.
A five.
Okay.
A five.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Now we're ready to roll.
All right.
Now, you can start.
So, A two is the, I'm just demonstrating what a roof screen would, uh, look like. We have some existing on the mausoleum, uh, adjacent to the site plan. And if, um, the AC unit on the expansion calls for a screen, that's, that's what we would put on, something similar to that.
Screening still stacks gonna be behind that screen?
Um, that was something that, uh, could happen. This, the stacks are six feet tall, from the, from the roof surface.
Just for the HVAC unit number?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. A, what are we, A three?
So, was that the only exhibit that pertained to the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so, moving on then to, uh.
Cause you just, so you, so the applicant understands, so I'm interpreting what was just said as, now, comment number five, the condition's gonna say on sheet A five hundred, show any proposed, show, not any, show proposed roof mounted utility equipment with means of screening to be consistent with that shown on exhibit A two.
Okay.
And the screenings is like, uh, this, this.
Yes, uh, so.
Holiday, uh, it looks like a half fence or something?
Yes, it's essentially a, a aluminum fence, um.
accordion or something.
I'm sorry?
Like an accordion.
Yeah.
Radiator.
Yes, it does look like a radiator.
Board on board fence is the word, yeah.
Or a board on board fence.
And on the perspective of this view, is this taken from the north side of the building?
Yeah, so this is the north, uh, it's a hillside, uh, north of the building. And we're looking toward, uh, what I call phase four, which is on the corner.
Okay, and about how high above the driveway grade are you standing, taking this photograph?
So, that would be, I think it's about twenty feet, twenty-five feet.
It looks to me like eye level is about even to the top of the.
Probably more like fifteen.
Fifteen feet?
Yeah.
Okay. This is a perspective view, fifteen feet above grade.
Right, so I assume your point is if you're actually down on grade, it will, it will screen even more.
Right, you won't see it, it'll screen even more, yeah.
Yeah, I did, just to, give it a first look.
Yeah, he's giving you a helpful hint. Next time you're here, take the picture from gray, you know, from gray shooting up rather than up on the hill, it will look even more impressive.
Okay, very good.
He might not have been able to see it at grade.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
I, I think, I don't know, but you may not.
All right, we're killing this thing, come on.
All right.
All right.
A three?
Yes.
A three, this is, uh, standing, uh, on countryside property, um, the first, uh, road, closest to the cemetery. And it shows the, uh, fifty-foot, uh, buffer of trees between, uh, properties. And if you look very closely, you can barely see, uh, that, the, probably the screen of, of the mausoleum, the screen we just looked at.
So, you're looking into the fifty-foot wide tree easement on the north side of the property, from the adjoining property?
Correct.
At the, at the crematorium and mausoleum?
Correct.
Am I correct? Okay.
Thank you for that description, Cindy, did you get that? A three is a photo of the existing fifty-foot wide tree easement.
On the north property line.
On the north property line.
Yep, adjoining the neighbor, but viewing the mausoleum and the crematorium from the neighbor's property.
And the neighbor being countryside, is that correct?
That's countryside, like neighborhood.
Thank you.
Should we move on to A? Should we move on to A? Okay, so this demonstrates essentially the same spot I took the previous picture during the winter months, this past winter.
Do you know if you can see lights on this building in the winter?
Um.
From the neighbors?
I believe you can't.
Cannot?
Cannot.
Thank you.
Hold on. We have to ask questions, ma'am.
At the end.
Right, after the, after he finishes testifying, the board faces questioning.
I'll allow that for public questioning. Okay.
A5.
Sorry. So, this is the view, I'm actually on the roof of the existing mausoleum directly south of the expansion area. So, this is almost a similar shot of being on the roof of the expansion, looking north toward the property line, the 50-foot buffer between Somerset Hills and Countryside.
So, in other words, the expansion will be right in front of this view?
Yes.
Mr. Gilman, Item 8C in Mr. Banish's report asks the applicant to explain whether all construction activity, including staging and stockpiling areas, will be confined to the limits of disturbance identified on the plans. Would you please address that?
Ah, yes, they will.
Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness.
Does the board have any questions? So, Mr. Gilman, further questions? Or professionals?
I have, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
The cremators, what's the fuel source?
Natural gas.
Okay. With, I, I, I believe you've done this, but I'm just going to ask it for the sake of the board getting it on record. But you've done a connected load calculation and no change to the incoming utility services required in order to, to fulfill your needs to expand to six cremators?
Correct.
Okay, so you've got enough incoming, otherwise the site plan would expand to include the upgrade of utilities. With regard to the stacks, is there any treatment applied at the stacks, scrubbing, wet scrubbing, anything?
No.
Okay, so it's, it's just, it's, it's the emission as designed with the cremator as installed?
Correct.
Okay, is that visible at any time or?
Permissions?
Yeah.
No. So, the reason, another reason these machines are more efficient is they are, there is an intuitive design to a computer program that is monitoring, so you would put, input data for each cremation relative to weight, type of container, and the, the unit will adjust all air and fuel mixtures accordingly, and it's monitored throughout the whole cremation.
So, safe to assume this is an improvement in your connected load?
I would say so, yes.
That's it, that was my only question.
Any board professional questions?
Not for this one.
No, oh, not for this one, okay. At this point, I'm going to open up the hearing for public questioning. I now open the public questioning portion, if anybody would like to come up and ask a question of Mr. Gilman about his testimony.
Or we can take the handheld mic if you have any questions.
Or we can go over to it, but these are, this area, this section is for questions for his testimony. If you wish to make public comment, there will be a public comment section at the end of the hearing.
Do you have any questions you want to ask?
I just wanted to make a statement about the.
Okay. I'm.
Okay.
Okay, come up now and make the statement. If you could please. Okay, if you could please state your name and address.
That's Letitia Lum, I live at 83 Mount Airy. It's right below the property.
You'll have to be sworn in.
Can you spell your first name?
L E, L E T I T I A.
Okay, can you raise your right hand? And do you swear the comments that you're about to make will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
Please go ahead.
I was just going to say that in the winter, you can see the lights from the mausoleum.
You can or cannot?
Can.
Can.
Yes.
From your house, right?
Yes, yes, they, they built an extension down the hill. I don't, I think that's east. And, and I can see those lights at night.
Are you across the street from it?
No, I'm at the bottom of the hill.
Ah.
Right next to Countryside's driveway.
Yeah.
So, she's on the south side of the mausoleum, and this addition is going on the north side of the mausoleum. So, she's talking about.
Countryside's on the north side, isn't it?
That's right, it is.
Yes, and I'm right below there.
She's observing lighting from Mount Airy Road, not from the Countryside Lane neighborhood on the north side.
Ah.
So, I'm an addition from several years ago.
Yes.
Put on the front of the wall.
Were those the lights you were discussing?
Can I just ask a quick, even though these lights have nothing to do with this application, what kind of light fixtures is that, that she's seeing?
They're wall fixtures, there was a planning where lighting would be went out there after that project. I don't know if anything's changed since then, but they're, they're just, I don't think there's any pre-stated lights, I think they're all wall mounted, Mr. Gilman probably knows.
Mr. Gilman, you can testify into that, yeah.
So, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like the lights she's referring to are attached to the ceiling of an overhang on the front balcony of the building and the lower balcony, which were part of the plan back in 2012, I believe, or 2009. But we can certainly.
Right, so even though those lights were approved back then, could shields be placed?
He's about to address it.
Yeah, so.
I don't know if it's about direct light sources or just the glow of the lights, you know.
Are you talking about, in other words, are you talking about the direct light source or just the glow of the light?
The lights themselves, I, I didn't want to make a big thing of it.
No, that's all right.
I was just commenting on the fact that, yes, you can see those two lights.
Okay, so Mr. Gilman, do you have a suggestion on how to remedialize this?
Well, certainly, I'd like to, to provide some shielding, is it disturbing you? I mean, I could, we could adjust them accordingly.
Not really.
Oh, so you just leave them alone?
I, you know, it's no big deal in the whole scheme of things, just that they are visible. I think, I think he wants to, he wants to be a good neighbor, so if it's bothering you, he's willing to work with you on that.
Absolutely.
This is your option.
And I appreciate it, but it's okay, because I don't sit out on my deck in the winter. Okay.
Well, I would offer, if you do ever need, you know, please call or come over and we'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Adjust.
Here we go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll close the public portion. I think that's it for Mr. Gilman.
That's it for Mr. Gilman, yes, unless anyone else has any questions.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gilman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call Mr. James Madsen.
Okay, Mr. Madsen, you will, I know you've been before this board, but if you could please come up and state your qualifications, if your license is current, and I know you've been before this board and other.
Kind of wild.
And so, if you could just give a brief, we do have to qualify you for the record.
No problem, I'm employed by Afcar Associates.
A microphone?
Microphone? Microphone or the handheld?
Employed by Afcar Associates, can you hear me now?
Nope.
Nope.
How about this one?
You might have to hold it close.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
Employed by Afcar Associates.
Yes.
13 Demond Place, Far Hills. I'm a professional engineer licensed by the state of New Jersey, graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology with a, what do I have, a degree in Bachelor of Science in Engineering Technology. Been licensed by the state for the past 25 years, and during that time, I appeared before numerous boards around the surrounding area, Morris County, Somerset County, Hunter County, different towns.
Including this board, correct?
Including this board.
Okay, thank you. Board members have any questions about qualifications or professionals, members of the public? I qualify you as a professional engineer.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Madsen. Was Afcar Associates engaged by the applicant to prepare the site plans for this project?
Yes, we were.
And has Afcar Associates done prior projects for the cemetery?
We've done several, the maintenance building and mausoleum that this young lady was speaking of earlier with the lights. You didn't design the lights, but we were involved in that application.
And did you prepare the site plans that were submitted to this board for this project?
Our firm did, yes.
Okay. Would you please describe the proposed project as shown on the latest site plans?
Well, what we're showing is a proposed expansion of the existing mausoleum and crematory. It amounts to about 1,724 square feet of additional roof area, which eliminates roughly 724 square feet of existing pavement area. It's well within the footprint of, you know, if you were to look at the outer limits of the mausoleum, the crematory itself is set back from the, an extended wall. So, you know, it's further away from the property line than the museum, mausoleum itself. And Mr. Schley has just brought up our site plan, and if you look at the middle, to the right of the drawing there, there should be a shaded area which would represent the location of the proposed expansion. You able to see that? Do you know what sheet of the site plan set this is? This is sheet 1 of 3. So, as I said, it's a shaded area.
Later pointer for the screen.
You just have, you're showing the color, the colorized version, the board has the black and white print.
All right, so this shaded, the expansion area is shaded already.
Right, the colored areas represent the steep slopes throughout the property, the slopes, different slopes throughout the property. So, the mausoleum. How'd you get this?
You still have the.
Little button.
The mausoleum is located right there.
Thank you.
This really shows the steadiness of my hands.
Yeah.
It's best, best to put your elbow on the arm of the chair.
You give me a lesson after the meeting.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
I assume the reason you've called this witness is to respond to the board's engineers' report?
Yes, I would like to have him do that. I, I, I was just looking to see if there were any other comments that had to be addressed in Mr. Schley's report, and I think that they've already been covered. The applicant has agreed to.
Well, covered, yep.
To, to handle those, so. I believe that there was one comment in the Environmental Commission report, I'm not sure that that has been addressed. Mr. Madsen, could you address the one comment in the Environmental Commission report?
No, I, I think there were two comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, two comments.
The one where we're talking about the order quality, and it was my opinion that with the reduction of the pavement surface, the motor vehicle surface on the property, you would have less, less impurities, pollutants running off from the parking area. And then the discontinuous of service in the second paragraph there was more not to eliminating the crematory from the mausoleum, but to eliminate the expansion who caused the discontinuation.
What you meant basically was that you wouldn't be meeting the demand for cremation services, correct?
Correct.
And the Environmental Commission, as I read the report, they wanted two clarifications, so you just clarify them, correct?
I, I hope so.
Go ahead.
I just have one question for Jim, or Mr. Madsen. Do you think that they're going to be able to stage and stockpile what they need to in, within the limits of disturbance? And the reason I ask that is because that's all going to happen back in a drive aisle by those parking spaces behind the crematory, isn't it?
He goes crazy.
I, I think they should be able to maintain that.
Mr. Mers, we cannot close.
Nothing's significant.
Okay, I thought that was a rule.
Close the door.
Can't hear. Could you repeat the question?
We couldn't hear because the door was open and the person was vacuuming. So, I suggested that they close the door, if someone wants to come in, they'll see a meeting in here and they'll either knock on the door or open, that's my opinion.
There's a limit of disturbance shown on the plan essentially on the northerly side of that shaded area that's the proposed expansion.
For the staging for the construction materials.
Right, and my question was, is, is there really enough room there for the stockpiling staging that's got to occur, given that there's a drive aisle there and there's parking in that same spot? And Mr. Madsen was in the process of answering that question, I think, when we were sidetracked.
I, I don't believe the storage of materials would be placed within the access drive and, which would be right through, through that location. This is where the mausoleum is, and there is that area there, you know, through, at which we could place the building materials. I don't, certainly they're not going to place them in an area that would prevent traffic from going through.
I assume, Mr. Banish, what you're really asking him is, is the, are the total limits of disturbance truly 2,500 square feet? Or would it be more if you had to stockpile material out of the area?
Right, because my, my guess is, well, that the aisle, the drive aisle is going to get shut down during construction some of the time. And the question is, is the stockpiling, whatever that is, of, of materials, and can it all simply be accomplished within the limit of disturbance and still maintain traffic circulation through the site safely?
That is questioned to you, not me.
And, and I believe they can certainly use the, the driveway through that area without being impeded by the construction materials. You know, I mean, there's only two walls, two small walls and a roof that are going up, it's not a lot of interior work.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Madsen, would you please address the comments set forth in the report from the board engineer dated May 28?
And again.
Again, if you comply with everything, just say you comply. If there are some questions or some issue with a comment, you can ask Mr. Flebby or that question.
Right. Now, let's only discuss things that you either don't want to comply with or that you have some question about.
Ask some questions for clarification.
The only item I would question would be C1D. The proposed sanitary lateral improvements for relocation of the existing lateral and for the connection of the new bathroom shall be provided on the plans. Well, there, there is no relocation of the existing sewer line proposed.
I think that was stated on the drawing. It was. It's taken call.
Well, I think what's shown on the drawing is that.
Well, that, that comment specifically, there was a, there was a cleanout shown on the plan that's not connected to a sewer lather. So, I just questioned what that was.
And that was on the left side, I guess, as you were looking.
Can you just, can you take out, take out your sheet?
Yeah.
Show them where the comment is so he sees what you guys are talking about?
Or is it a roof drain cleanup or is that sewer?
Well, this is sewer here.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that was the, like, like, a question, there's a, there's a cleanout shown, it's not identified with what it's for. And it's part, it's inside the footprint of the new building expansion. So, it's either part of a roof drain system or sanitary, or maybe it was picked up by a surveyor incorrectly, maybe it's a monitoring model, it just needs to be addressed.
I'm going to agree, that's a roof drain.
Oh, a roof drain system, right?
Yeah.
So, it probably just has to get somehow reconnected.
So, instead of technical detail C1D saying the proposed sanitary lateral improvements for the relocation of the existing lateral and for the connection of the new bathroom shall be provided on the plans, that comment should say what?
According to the applicant, it's a roof drain cleanout. According to the applicant, it's a roof drain cleanout.
Okay, so the plan should note that that's a roof drain cleanout.
And it needs to be reconstructed and relocated to accommodate the new building expansion.
Okay, so the proposed roof drain cleanout.
And I do say in there potentially a roof drain cleanout, so the comment in my report does indicate that it's potentially a roof drain.
Okay, got it. Let's say shall be clarified, provided and clarified on the plans, how's that?
Yeah, I mean, well, it's, I look at a site plan as a contractor needs to take these as a drawing and build from it.
Yeah.
So it needs to be clear on what they need to do in the field.
Okay, got it. That's the only one, so everything, with that, now you agree with all the comments to be conditions for plan revisions, correct?
I have a copy.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have any further questions, Mr. Madsen?
Nope, he just, everything.
Okay, I'm asking Mr. Osterman.
Oh, no, I do not have any further questions for this witness.
Okay, does the board have any questions on Mr. Madsen?
I do not.
Okay. Or any board professionals have any further questions?
No, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay, so I will now open it up for the public portion for questioning of Mr. Madsen about his testimony.
Any questions back there for Mr. Madsen?
Okay, seen none, I'm going to close the public portion. Okay, Mr. Osterman, would you like to sum up?
Yes, I'm going to be very brief and just say, the applicant appreciates your time this evening, and we would respectfully request that this application be approved.
Okay, so now I'm going to open it up for public comment and general comment on this application, okay? Seen none, close the public portion. Board deliberation and vote, anybody want to take it off?
Madam Chair, I just want to say this appears to be a fairly straightforward application, and I'm in favor of it.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Did you want to get anyone else's?
Anybody else?
No, deliberation.
Okay, Mr. Mergen?
Then I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Second?
Who's second in that? Mr. Baumann? Okay, I think we're ready for a vote.
Yes.
Mr. Mergen?
Yes.
Ms. Mandu?
Yes.
Ms. Angela?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Chairwoman Pedici?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is comments from members, I'm going to say that Mr. Banish is, will not have, will not be able to give us the next planned element on June 22nd, is that correct? Am I right, 22nd? Yes, 22nd. So I will be canceling that meeting, and I will also be canceling the meeting of July 6th, because that's right after the legal holiday, and I'm sure everybody is going to be quite busy or out of town. So we will not be meeting until Thursday, July 20th, at which time we will take the next element of the master plan, then Mr. Banish will give us, will, at that point will tell us.
Thank you.
What that next element will be. Any other member, comment, comments for members?
So we don't have any other applications in the?
No, right now, there's nothing in the pipeline that we know of.
Don't change yourselves.
Yeah.
They can change, drop the hat.
Yeah.
Comments from staff?
I wanted to say something.
Yes.
I may, you may have said it, so I don't mean to step on your toes. So Andrew is filling Joe Esposito's spot for Township Committee, so he'll be here in that spot.
Yeah, he'll be in that spot. We will have to swear him in at that time on July 20th.
Okay.
As the Class III member.
And then his spot that is open will be, Mr. Kram will resign from his, he's Class II.
Two.
He'll be moving to Class IV in Andrew's spot.
Right, and then the Class II will be remained.
Will remain open and we're, we're still by statute, by having.
Good, thank you, Mayor Fields, for that.
That way.
So everybody knows how everything is going to be moving.
Yeah.
So that'll all be settled by July 20th.
Right.
Would Mr. Kram?
I guess he'll have to be sworn in for that class or not?
Yeah, I want, yes, he's sworn in, we'll do that on the 20th, we'll swear both of them out.
When he comes back, he'll be sworn in for that class.
Yeah, right.
Okay, and we'll leave two open.
Yeah. The two will be open. Any comments from staff? Okay.
And just so I clarify, so he's staying on environmental, so we still meet the qualifications?
Correct.
Without the classification of two.
That's right.
Because you don't, we didn't need, we don't need two. Class two.
So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second, and a second?
Second.
Second, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Oppose, meeting is adjourned.